Call to order the Board of Education, regular meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next regular meeting is July 8th at 4:30. Reminder, there's not a work session meeting this month. I don't have any public comments related to agenda items. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with one change, and that would be to pull from it the joint powers agreement and put that under discussion items.
Alright. All in favor, say aye.
Give me a second.
I'll second you.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Onto reports. Ms. Harrington.
I have none, because I have a lot of action items to...
Ms. Fisher?
The only thing I just wanted to get to know is we are obviously constant on staffing and assignments for next year, so lots of work going on right now.
Alright. Dr. Kierger?
Prairie Lakes has finished their care and treatment application. It's a change from an ALC into a care and treatment by state law. So, they finished that application in the second revision, which is really good according to the state. Usually it goes through four or five revisions. So, knock it on wood, I think it will be approved fairly soon. People have done a really nice job on it.
So, what's the net change for us? What does that mean? Is the title change? Is it operational change?
I think it's a title change.
There's a little change in budget, which I'll talk about when I present the budget.
Okay.
But it fundamentally doesn't really change the way the school operates.
Okay.
Co-op will be starting, the co-op will be starting a day treatment program up on Midwest campus where Lakeview used to be. We'll start this fall. Hopefully, we won't have to send kids to Glenwood? No, that's not right.
Inawaska.
Inawaska. We'll be able to have them here and have other schools send kids to us. It's not our program, though. That was one of the things they had to make sure. It's not our program. It's their program. So, one of the things we had talked about a lot is the fact how much money we were going to have to spend on teacher evaluations with the new teacher evaluation model. Well, when the legislature passed the new teacher evaluation, the teacher evaluation law this year, they are going to allow us to use some staff to go in funds to pay for teacher evaluation. There's some guidelines that we have to follow if we do that, but we may be able to use some of those funds for that. Haven't figured out how much. McCray is interested in sharing Annette Darren, our food service coordinator. We gotta work that through, but they're getting a new superintendent at McCray, and I'm not real sure how soon we'll be able to do that. Talking with Annette, she's okay to do that, and she would just add on one more district. She's gonna have all of southwest central Minnesota here between here and South Dakota pretty quick, so we'll just have to see how it works out. But I wanted to let you know that. Otherwise, that's it.
I think those things are great, and if we could facilitate other cooperations, other districts, I know there was a chance at one time with London Spicer, with Pam's office. I think those are great ideas if we can facilitate them.
Yeah, they gotta be interested.
Yeah.
It's the one big thing. McCray's interested right now, and they have three, two or three vacancies for head cooks. So, Annette would be in on that hiring. We'll just, we'll see how it works out.
The only thing I'm concerned with a little bit, though, is, and you'll have to be, you'll have to guide us on that, but Annette is, you know, she's, she's a gamer.
I know.
She'll roll her sleeves up, and, but yet, you know, we have to remember that she's our employee and that we can't...
And she's our food serve.
See, yeah, we can't, we just gotta be very careful that we don't load her up with too much that...
I've talked to her about that, exactly that point, Mr. Reynolds, and she's actually the one that came to me and said, "I'm interested in doing it." And I said, "Are you sure?" So, we'll see how it all works out.
Very good. Moving on to action items. Ms. Harrington, you have a few in a row here, so...
Okay, and I also, for the first four or five, I have Brian Bullitt here from Bullitt Incorporated. He's the one that did the engineering work on these first few projects. So, the first one is to award the Kennedy Kitchen remodel project. The bid opening was on May 30th, and this is for some kitchen remodel work. We talked about this, I think, back in April, when we talked about the different remodeling that's gonna happen. So, we received three bids for that, and the low bidder was Carlson Construction with a bid of $137,235. And the total budget for the project is $175,000. And there's also an additional $33,000 of fees, so we're within budget on this.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Action M G1, award the Kennedy Kitchen remodel project? So, further discussion? Hearing in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Opposed, that Action M carries. Action M G2, award Garfield Roof Project. Ms. Harrington.
Okay. The Garfield re-roof project was budgeted at $108,501. That budget included replacement of one-third of the roof. When we went out and bid it, I'm sorry, replacement of the insulation in one-third of the roof. It's an entire roof replacement, but one-third of the insulation. When we bid it, we bid it out for 100 percent of the insulation. So, that caused a change between, a little bit of a change between the budget and where the actual bids came in. In addition, it was discovered that a roof ladder and hatch needed to be replaced, and that's something that needs to be done for, for code purposes. And also, Garfield has a non-functioning chimney on it, but it's not necessary to remove that chimney. However, we did, when we played, when we did the specifications, we did include that as an alternate. So, depending on how it came in, if we wanted to remove the chimney, we could. But there's no issue with the chimney. So, at this point, we feel that the, the best option would be to do the re-roof, replace the roof hatch and the ladder, and leave the chimney as is. So, the total cost with the low bid and the Bullock fees comes out to $127,893. The project would be over budget by $19,392. Of that amount, $7,000 would be covered by Garfield Repairs and Maintenance budget, and then $12,000 would be covered by district-wide repairs and maintenance. This is a roof that has really been needing repair and needing to be replaced. We've held off because we weren't sure for many years what was gonna happen with Garfield, but we're keeping Garfield, and so that's that replacement. And so, the low bid on, the low bidder was, help me here, Brian, if I pronounce this wrong, Schwickerts?
Yes.
Thank you. And they have offices in Mankato, Sturtville, and New Hope.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Action M G2, award the Garfield Roof Project? So, is there a second? Further discussion or questions?
Pam, we're having, this always comes up, you know, since we have a wonderful history with roof projects. We'll have somebody out there checking on that and staying on top of what's going on to make sure we're...
Yep. Part of our contract with Bullitt has them checking in on the specific, very important parts of the project.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Bullitt.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve Action M G2. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that Action M carries. Moving on to Action M G3, award the WAC Roof Project.
Okay, the WAC re-roof project was budgeted at $52,965. This is a portion of the WAC roof. This is over the rehearsal hall, and it's for also a partial replacement of insulation. And that was also determined that the roof ladder needed to be replaced on that as well. So, that went out to bid, we received, we did the bid opening on May 30th. We had two bidders, and the low bidder was West Central Roofing. And so, we recommend moving forward with that as well as the ladder replacement. That will come to $58,020. So, that project would be $5,055 over budget, which is just a little more than replacing that ladder, which we didn't know at the time of setting the budget. And so, that would come out of the WAC Repairs and Maintenance budget.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Action M G3?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussions or questions? Hearing in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that Action M carries. Action M G4, award Senior High Roof Project.
Okay, Senior High Roof Project, and this is the part over the pool. This was budgeted at $141,440. So, it included re-roofing a portion of that, and you should be seeing Senior High Roof will be coming up the next few years, the different parts of the roof. The design and specifications said assume that the roof insulation is adhered. And so, right now, we've got the, the... What is the technical term of that roof we have up there? Ballasted roof?
Ballasted.
Ballasted roof, and that's with all the rock on top of it. And we're gonna be moving to the TPO roof, which is the adhered roof that doesn't have all the rock on top of it, and that's what we move to on a lot of the district buildings. So, we're looking at that, but part of that is making sure that the insulation is adhered. Because if we adhere the roof to the insulation and the insulation isn't adhered, bye-bye roof. So, the low bidder was Laraway Roofing. And they have offices in New Ulm and Hutchinson. We received three bids on this one, and the total cost, including the lowest bid and the Bullock fees, is $109,077. However, if the roof insulation is not adhered, then there's gonna be an additional cost of $43,495. So, we don't know yet until they start tearing off the roof. And the reason we did not do testing on that is because it's called destructive testing, and we'd have to actually puncture into the roof, and we didn't want to do that at the beginning. So, we could end up with as much as $152,572. In this case, if it, if we needed the full deal, in that case, we'd be over budget by $11,132, and that'd be covered by Senior High Repairs and Maintenance.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Action M G4?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussions or questions? I have one.
Yes.
Why are we changing the roof from whatever you said to TPO? What's the...
I'm gonna let you address that one.
Yeah. The ballasted EPE on roof, one of the hard things with the maintenance with the ballasted roof is with all the rocks on it, you can't actually see the seams. And when they start to pull apart during the frost, heat cycle that occurs, you don't know where those seams need to be attached, and that's one of the problematic issues with it. With the TPO roof, which is self-adhered, you'll see those, you'll be able to do regular maintenance on it, and that'll prevent failures.
Okay. And should have the insulation been adhered with the...
Not necessarily.
No?
Typically, on a pool system, many, oftentimes insulation isn't here because of the pool.
It is or is not.
It oftentimes is.
It is, okay.
But with a ballasted roof system, because the, the weight of the rocks are holding insulation down, it may not be adhered. So, we're not, we're not sure.
Okay. Other questions? There's a motion and a second for Action M G4. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that Action M carries. Action M G5, Middle School Science Rooms Remodel. Ms. Harrington.
Okay, and for this one, this was done by Architects Rego and Youngquist, and we have Bob Rego here with us on this one. So, the district budgeted $180,000 for the remodel of four middle school science classrooms. And we talked about this, and at that point, you gave permission to go forward with seeking bids on this, and we were gonna see where they came in. The middle school raised $70,000 in donations for a total project budget of $250,000. And then Architects Rego and Youngquist were brought in for the design and specifications. So, the architects' project estimate for remodeling the four classrooms came in much higher than the budget that we had. So, the architects and the middle school staff, they worked really hard to scale back the project to meet the budget, which is $250,000. The project that went out for bids was for two classrooms and a small work area with the demolition, casework, and finishing of the other two classrooms as alternates. So, basically, went out for two classrooms because they thought that that would come in within the $250,000 budget. So, you can see it kinda changed from the original, we thought $180 for four rooms, and then it changed. So, went out for two and said, "Hey, if these bids come in better than we're, better than we hoped, then we might be able to do the other four." It's still a scaled-back version of what they were originally hoping to do, but it was something. So, at that point, went out and then got the, got the bids, and came back, the low bidder was John Chester. And detailed in your board packet, it talks about what the bids came in. So, the total cost for the base bid plus the alternates for the classroom came in And we know we had budget of $253,000, I'm sorry, $250,000, and so that left $113,000. Of that, there's $42,000 that's pending for health and safety funding, because health and safety will cover certain portions, and it's pending approval, and the people at MDE said, and our other consultant that works on that said, they're 95 percent certain those will get approved. And that's for $42,000. So, the amount over budget for all four classrooms would be $71,000. If you just looked at the two classrooms, the amount over budget would be $21,935. And now, when this was originally brought up, some of the board members had mentioned concerns because we're going into a facility study, and what happens if we change the middle school or the purpose of the middle school? Do we want to spend this money? And at that point, we said, "Yeah, we want to move forward with this. We want to go out and look," because it was $180,000. And we felt that even if, if we could get it done for 180, and even if it got used for a few years with the middle school students, it could still be used by the elementary students when they came in. But now, with the way the costs have come in, Dr. Kierger and I are questioning the fiscal responsibility of moving forward with either the two-room or the four-room option, given the upcoming facility study and the project being over budget.
Okay. Let me back to my action items.
So, we're recommending rejecting all bids.
Just for your information, I talked to Mr. Leach at Jennie O., and he, he indicated that we could retain the funds that they donated to us as long as it went for science teaching or classroom improvement. But if we held it, maybe we could rebid it again next year, and it might be a little, we would have some more money out of the budget. But right now, my feeling is that it's important that we not have any preconceived ideas relative to the facility study process. Because I don't know what's gonna happen. I don't think anybody around the table does, so...
I guess what I'm concerned about or confused about is how did we, how were we given a budgeted item of $180,000? We raised, however, 65 plus five for $70,000 to get to the total of $250,000, and we really didn't have any basis to believe that or not to believe those figures. And I'm trying to figure out how, how it got that far.
There was a...
And the 360 isn't, if I understand correctly, that's not even completed the way it was originally wanted, wanting to be completed, correct? For all the casework and all that stuff, the 360 doesn't involve it. So, we're actually talking more money than even the 360. I'm concerned on how we got from original budget of 180, raising 70, and now we're talking $400,000. And I agree that the fiscal responsibility, it's hard to go, how do we say we're gonna spend $400,000, and we don't know what the community wants to do with those facilities? So, my first question is, how did we get from here to here, so far off in a matter of months?
Early on, there was a discussion that it would cost about $45,000 per building or per room.
But how did that, how did we get that figure? That's a bad question.
There, at that point, there was a contractor that had come in and just looked through based on the plans that the, or based on the middle school, what they were thinking they wanted. That was before an architect was brought in to actually dig into the project and, okay, here's what it's really gonna need in order to do this.
Okay.
So, what's the difference between those two? Do you want to elaborate on that?
No, I mean, it was, it was a walkthrough estimate, and that was pretty far off.
Okay.
So, we ended up, the district ended up raising $70,000, so we ended up then with $250,000.
Yeah.
Thought, thinking that it might be fairly close, but it's still quite a ways away.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I'm struggling with thinking it might be close without a... I mean, the process seemed like it was, we're doing things a little bit... We have estimates for the roofing. They come in with a bid, here's the estimates, and we approve it. This seems like it was kind of a... And how did we, how did we actually get the money from Jennie O.? I mean, did we ask for it based on the 250 or how?
Mr. Miley, Mr. Miley had talked to Jennie O. about funding for, funding the science, science room renovation.
Okay. Which in theory is okay, it's just, we asked for...
Well, what do we, what do we have left? I mean, from this standpoint here, we're looking at, you know, when I look at this, I don't have a, you know, I don't have the doc, you know, the piece-by-piece thing, so I'm gonna refer to you. What can we, is this like the Cadillac? And I'm not talking cabinets and stuff, but I mean, some of the parts and pieces that go into making a science room remodel. What things can we change on there? Are there...
Do we make them look less?
Yes. I mean...
Not a lot. We actually scaled back a number of things that we might have done in a full-scale remodeling that we would have estimated from the beginning to make it as economical as possible. Like, we eliminated some underground structures so we could conceal gas piping and water piping and so forth, and we had to have some of those things exposed, so...
Did you say gas piping?
Yes.
Do we need, do we need gas piping?
Well, that was one of the requests at, at the teacher's lab station and in the prep area.
Okay. Because I'm thinking that's something, I mean, do we use, I have to ask Mr. Docabaca, but do we need gas piping? I mean, we used to take months of orders when I was in the junior high.
They wanted, that's what they wanted.
Probably got in more trouble with the gas. I mean, I'm just, I'm just looking at things like that, you know, can we get, if we got rid of that, if, you know, if, if some of the other things that we, that aren't necessary, and I didn't put this together. So, I hate to get this close to the finish line, and I, and I know all about facility studies. I've been through about six of them, and I, I have always been in the camp where I make decisions that are best for today with the information that I have in front of me. And that building is gonna be used for many, 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 many years. Whether it's a middle school for the next 50 years, or whether it's an elementary school, it really doesn't matter. It's gonna be part of Wilmer's landscape until my kids are long gone. So, I just, I'm just really hesitant when I'm this close.
I agree. Well, go ahead, Jack. I was just gonna say, I, on Mike's point, I agree that, you know, we're so close, and it was so nice to have a local business contribute money to this project, and now to scrap the whole thing. As Mike was saying, is there anything we could do, talking to, you know, the principals, to the science staff there? Are there a few things we can do to make it better for our kids, the middle school, for science?
I would, I would agree with, that we're close. What I'm concerned with and what, what is leading me to say I, I feel more comfortable tabling this right now, is we've now gone from a need for four to being able to possibly do two halfway. I don't want to do anything halfway. Let's do it right the first time. And I agree, Mike, I agree with Mike, you know, this is a building we're gonna use for a while. And just that statement alone makes me feel like we gotta wait until we make sure we've got some dollars in here to do this, regardless of what that facility study says. I want to see that this stays on the top priority list of what needs to be done, but let's get it, the funding in, and do it right one time. Not piecemeal. We saw what happens when we piecemeal. We went through 10 years of litigation when we piecemeal. We're not gonna piecemeal. I think we've gotta do it right, because it is a building that this city's gonna use, this district's gonna use for a long time. Let's do it right the first time, and let's get four rooms, if that's what's needed, whether it stays a middle school or it turns into something else. If four rooms is what we need, that's gotta be what we do, but they've gotta be done right the first time.
Here's the other piece about being close, is that the scaling back that was done, was done prior to going out to bid and with the specifications. So, any further scaling back, we can't just take our current specs and go, "Okay, we're gonna strike this, strike this, strike this." Now, we're gonna have to go back out for bids, redo the specs, and go back out for bids. Because we can't just take our current specs. Unless we bid all of those things as alternates, then we could sit and pick and choose, just like they went and bid certain items as alternates. So, we could say, "We're gonna accept the base bid for the two rooms, and we're not gonna do those alternates." Because we didn't have, like, for instance, the gassing as an alternate, we can't just say, "Oh, we're just gonna strike that," without going back out, without rejecting and going back out for bids.
I think the fact that we've got a local business that has donated, I'd hate to have it reflect negatively on them if we went halfway on something. I think we owe it to them, even though their donation is about a, you know, it's a sizable donation, but in the grand scheme of things, it's not big enough to finish the whole project. I'd hate to have something reflect negatively on them if we didn't do it all out the first time.
Or what they were perceived to be giving money towards.
You know, I just, I, I think we, and if they're comfortable with us just doing it the right way, I think we should do it the right way. I think our teachers there need it done the right way.
Our students need it.
Our students need it done the right way, and, and I, and I know I'm saying, I've got a, I've got a son that's gonna be still in middle school next year, and I know I'm saying something that's not gonna benefit him. But down the road, we gotta do it right. We just, I, I hate it when we piecemeal things. I think we gotta do it right.
So, where did these specs come from? I mean, from the standpoint, like, you know, I mean, I just caught just a word about gas. I mean, it's made me think, do we need gassing? I don't even know. Do we even have gas at the high school, Mr. Schmidt? We do, okay. See how often I spend on the science classroom.
We just keep you away from the science.
Well, I keep you away from the gas. But, you know, I think, like I say, if we could, I want to do four classrooms the right way, and I want to do them in that building, because it just is, it, it's gonna, it's probably the best constructed building in our district. I mean, it's 50 years old, you would hardly even know it looking at it. But there's gotta be a way that we, you know, we rewrite these, if, if we're gonna rewrite these specs, if we don't need the gas, if we don't need, you know, I'd have to, I see, you know, I'd have to, you know, have to have Mr. Docabaca, some of the folks over there that went to put some of these things in. But I don't want this just to die and not, and just go away. If we're gonna do something here tonight, I want there to be an action mechanism that we come back and put this together. You know, I was hoping that we could have put maybe two rooms together tonight, and then with our increased funding that we're gonna get in the 2015 school year, we could make up a little slack. It'd be another year of, you know, to get some capital funds. But then we're also gonna, you know, we're gonna get a little bump with our, with the kindergarten funding. I thought we could put the rest of it together, but I don't want two half-done rooms and then add two more half-done rooms again.
What's, what's the timeframe for, for doing four rooms? What's, is that a summer project, or was it...
It could easily be a summer project, if we could have a bid prior to the summer vacation starting.
So, I agree with what everybody is saying. I struggle with doing two rooms if the, if the middle school is saying we need four and doing partway on two rooms. Going back to saying, table it for tonight, leave it on here, figure out what we can do for 2014, 15 school year, and we'll get it next spring again.
Yeah, I think it's gotta be, it's gotta be the top priority of, especially over there. I don't think it's gonna be a question for the middle school staff about its priority, but...
And maybe it's...
We're this close, we've got a donation, we have a donation from a community business. I think it has to be...
And is that, was the donation based on the 180, you know, was it, or this $250,000 budget? Maybe that donation would have been $100,000 had we had more accurate numbers at that time.
Well, and I don't think that door is closed, Mr. Street. I was visiting with Mr. Leach after our event on Saturday, and I don't think that that door is closed either, so...
Well, in my discussion with them, he indicated to me that they had given us as
Well, in my discussion with him, he indicated to me that they had given us as much as they felt they could give us. That, that was a discussion I had today.
And when we budgeted, it was a hundred, originally when it was brought forward, it was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that the whole project was gonna cost. And at that point, we already had a commitment of sixty-five thousand dollar donation. And so, in, instead of only budgeting a hundred and fifteen, we still budgeted the full one eighty and said, great, whatever else extra you can use to do, do more things on the project. So if you reject all bids tonight, we will still have the one hundred and eighty set aside for this. It's still, it's in the budget, it's still set aside, and we can carry it over to next year and potentially add some operating capital money, like you're talking about. And so then we would maybe have more money to do that particular thing. And so that's where it's nice, if you table it, then we can just, we'll just, we'll make plans for that one hundred and eighty thousand. And then we'll be able to come back to it, and that way, if in December, January, and everyone has worked together and figured out what exactly they want, 'cause at that point, in the middle school, the science department, the principal, the architects, contractors, they were all making these, these plans up with these bids and specs. I mean, they didn't come from, like, district offices, which are gonna get. They all worked with the people in the field, right? And so that's where those came from. So they can all get back together and work on that and figure out where it's gonna be, and we can see what we can do for money.
When you say a hundred, just making sure that we're correct. The district committed a hundred and eighty plus a seventy, so there's two hundred and fifty in the pool to start.
There is now.
Right? I'm just...
Yes, we're, we're setting fifty, a hundred dollars aside for this.
Yes, you're right, you're right. Because the donations came in, and those donations were specified for a certain thing, and those will sit like that until they're used for...
Correct. What was the rationale for four rooms? I've heard four, two, how many sections of science are there at the...
This was a middle school initiative.
Bob, what'd you say? Bob, why did, Mr. Regal, why did they have...
What we have is, we have two per grade level, so we're hoping to do it in phases. And the reason that we, your question, Mr. Street, was, you know, how did you base your decision off of? Well, on March thirty-first, we have preliminary estimates from the architects. And they had about three seventy for four rooms and two prep office rooms from David the Architect. So, working with that, we were able to get it under that, even looking at with contractors and stuff. So, when we went into it, idea would be four, it'd be great, things started, you could go spend the years, you know, you had people come in and look. But as we saw, you know, we were, we were good to go with phase one with two rooms, phase two would be another two, and then down the road, we're looking at hopefully two additional ones. So, eighth grade has two classes right now, seventh and sixth also, so it was, it was gonna be phased in. No matter how we thought we were gonna do it, it was gonna be phased that way.
If we phase it, would the eighth grade get the first two possibly, then the...
Exactly, Mr. Kunkwitz.
Seventh would get the next two and...
Yep, that's what we were looking at. And then, sixth grade was gonna be across from the seventh grade, and they could share at any time possible, working together. So just to get us through, it was gonna be great that four, while we, we talked about two. The goal at the end is to do it right, as you're all saying. I mean, I, I agree totally with you there. It's a wonderful building, and hopefully have six updated science lab rooms. And that, that started as of two years ago, talking about the need for it, so, yeah, I, everybody's, I agree with everybody saying, and we're willing to work with, you know, the architects, Pam, and just trying to make this work.
Is there a benefit to doing two, to doing phases? Like, if we did two this year and two next year, or wait and do all four next year, or cost, if you're gonna...
What we're hearing, though, is that it's not, not necessarily four. Four wasn't gonna be a phase, so we still need two more for the sixth grade. So we're really talking about six rooms. But I'm also hearing that even in these first two rooms, we're not even hitting what is really wanted. That we're still short.
Can we do two rooms with, with a quarter million dollars?
The two, the base bid had the two rooms, what would be essentially the eighth grade rooms, would be completed. Would have the cabinetry and everything. And in this case, we looked at those two rooms, because in talking with Brian Brand, when we were just started, is those were the rooms where the gas lines originated from, so we did the easiest to rehook gas back up. And eighth grade was the only one that, the only one of the grades that were possibly looking for use of gas. So that's why those were the rooms selected.
So, this bid that we're looking at is not a scaled-back bid? A scaled-back plan from what you originally wanted?
The only thing it does differently is, we initially looked at trying to feed the utilities, the gas, the water, and electrical to the lab stations from below. That was going to be really expensive because of cutting all the slabs and so forth. So we fed them from above. And it, it's a scaled-back, it puts some, what we call power poles on the lab tables. That wasn't the most desirable way, but we felt it was a really very acceptable way to do this in order to get the whole project done. The two finished classrooms have all the cabinetry that the science department had asked for, had all the stations and so forth. It has the prep lab between the two classrooms. They are essentially finished. We would only, if, if we had started over, we'd only do, accomplish what we did, maybe a little different ways. It isn't gonna, it actually would cost more money to feed things from below than from above. The alternate two classrooms, we did not touch any of the cabinetry that's there. So that would still have, if these alternates were in place, that'll, the, the room layout would be a little different because we have the prep lab between the two. But the old cabinets would stay just as they are. So, let's, those, that, those alternate two classrooms were a greatly scaled-back approach.
So let's, um...
I'm getting, no, I...
I'm gonna say, let's dumb this down one version. What it, will it take to do what they want done for two classrooms? Dollars and cents, period. Just what they want done, not alternates and all that, what they want done for two classrooms?
On what Pam handed out, it's three hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and sixty.
Okay, and then to do the four the way they would like to have them done, total cost is?
Another three hundred and fourteen, one sixty approximately. The alternates did not get, get them to replace all the cabinetry. That's what was part of the scaled-back.
So what I'm hearing you say then, is to do the four classrooms the way they want, and now we're at six hundred thousand dollars?
Probably close to that, less some money if we're not gonna put gas in those other two rooms.
So even if that's high, how, how are we asking to support a hundred and fifty percent, if I do my math right, increase over a budget? Will we, that doesn't seem fiscally responsible, especially with the feasibility study coming up. If we can get, if we can, the middle school can get, I hate to use the term "get by", but if we can teach the science that we need to teach for one more year, know where the facility study comes, we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, started towards that three hundred and fourteen for the first two, how can we spend five hundred thousand dollars for the four that we want? And that's where I'm, that's... I mean, if you want to build your house, and somebody said, well, yeah, it's only gonna cost, instead of two hundred thousand, it's gonna cost you four hundred thousand, you'd be scaling back. I mean, that's a hundred percent more than what your budget...
Well, yeah, I say, I'm just kinda, we hope this conversation's gonna go back and forth, so... This three hundred and fourteen, one hundred and sixty, that is, that was just for two rooms?
Correct. Plus the prep room that the two rooms share.
And that's why I wanted it dumbed down from three to, and then we're talking half a million dollars.
Because I'm just, yeah, I...
I started with that. Table this. Well...
Well, at this, at this point...
Don't make, this hang, I said, but I wanted to spread a little further, we need a little further discussion before the table, move the table on the table. What I, all I'm gonna, all I'm gonna say is, I wanna, if, I want, we, we need to put a date to revisit this, so it just doesn't sit out there for, you know, and what we want, and, and with some instruction to what we want back. I mean, I think that's reasonable, isn't it? Otherwise, this could just...
Well, I think, I think what I heard now is that, I'm hearing phases, that there's a desire to put this in a phase. I think we need to see a phase plan of what we're gonna do, and I would agree with Mr. Reynolds. I, I think we need to table this, but let's table it with a clear plan of when it's coming back and how the phases are gonna look, so we can have a plan in place, a concrete plan in place for moving forward to bring in what we need in that building.
'Cause my hope would be that we could come back with some cost savings, like if the science department, at least in the sixth and seventh grade, could live without gas. You know, I, I, you know, I don't, you know, what I'm saying is, if we can cut some costs...
Have some options.
Save some money, and then come back and maybe get, maybe...
But see what all six would look like, right?
And see what all, and maybe knock it all out next summer.
Let's see, yeah, but let's see what all six rooms will look like, if it's, if something's taught differently in seventh grade than eighth grade, let's make sure that's figured out in that, or in sixth grade. That's, that's, let's see the whole project.
Let me ask Mr. Dokabaka, as he sits there, what are the needs? Sorry to put you on the spot, but are the needs, I'm, I'm assuming, 'cause I've been over there and I've taught there, I'm assuming that there is a different needs in sixth, seventh, and eighth? Or do you want them all to look the same?
The biggest difference is just with the eighth grade having gas. Neither the seventh grade or the sixth grade had a request for that, or really had it in their standards where they were using that material. We also felt that as a department, if there was an experiment where sixth grade or seventh grade hadn't had a use for gas, we have no problem switching on a classroom for that, because it was, for the cost, we thought of bringing gas all back in. It seemed excessive for the amount that it would be used. So that's why one, two rooms were selected to be one that have gas accessible.
And I think it's gonna be important to keep the architects in the conversation all the way through and in the presentations and the phases and whatnot, so we have some realistic costs.
Yeah.
Now, you're talking about tabling, and I think you're talking about tabling the project, but as far as this particular action item goes, you need to either accept a bid or reject all bids.
Correct. So...
So there's two motions that we're gonna need on this, is what I'm hearing, potentially, right?
Well, the action item that we're talking about is to deny and table the projects, is what the action item states.
Is to reject...
Says reject all bids and table the project until after the completion of the facility.
That would be fine, and I've taken the notes of what you asked for, from what you've requested.
So, but if, if we wanted to add a date to that...
I don't like that, you know? I, well, I, I don't like leaving the facility study in that motion.
Well, you can take that out.
You can, you can, and you can put it in.
I just don't want this contingent on, 'cause like I said, facility studies, if, they could drag on, and we need to, we all, we, I think we all, from, we all have a desire to, I believe, to do it the right way and to make a good building, you know?
And as we done, it's just a matter of...
It's just, so I, I'd like to take that out of there. I want this kind of contingent on our plan of getting info, new information, new costs, and a different, you know...
What it sounds, to me, what we're all kinda saying is, until after a completion of a detailed plan on replay, on upgrading all six science rooms. That's what we're looking for, right? We're looking to see how much is it gonna cost to do this entire project, and then we can decide. We can afford to do phase one, and here's what phase one's gonna be, here's what phase two's gonna be. But I think what I'm hearing reservations on, is we don't know what the whole piece is, and that things are different. Let's get an idea of how much the whole project's gonna be, so we know what the phases are.
Yeah, I don't like this, yeah, that, 'cause it's, it's just in our, just in our conversation here at this table, we, it was, it was all over, you know, that first we, there was like, you know, you looked over and said, God, can we get two rooms done for that? I'm like, no.
Well...
You know, so it was like, I think...
Your recommendation is a motion to reject all bids, actually, period, as far as action items.
That's correct.
Forget the, forget the tabling. Just forget the tabling, and then we have a directive to Dr. Kiergert and Mr. Miley, come back with a plan involving what needs to be done, whether it's two, four, or six classrooms.
Let me ask Mr. Regal a question, though. What was the, let me ask you this, though. What was the bidding climate like? Was it pretty small?
Yes. This, this spring and all the bidding we've done with a variety of school districts, it's been a very expensive bidding climate, and we've, it's been difficult to get there. And there's a variety of reasons why it's happened, but that's, that's what we've seen so far.
So let me ask you another question, your professional opinion, man. If we did our work for the next few months and went out to bid this earlier, would we, would we have a little, a little more, because it'll be early for the next school year, would we have a little more competition?
You may. We contacted several other contractors, and part of their concern was you have some very fine contractors here within Wilmer that they didn't feel they could compete with.
Okay, and that's good, I mean, I wanna, I mean, I want, I mean, that's, I think, all of our, I mean, if we can get competitive local bids, that's optimal. Yeah, it's too bad we're not laying road construction, 'cause the county did really well in their bids.
One contractor I know who, who did it, so, you know, if we had more time, there's, might be another one to get prepared.
That's kinda what I was hearing.
And it is key to, if, if you can make that decision, and if we can be out on the streets bidding in March, and that'll give us a better bidding climate.
All right.
So, I'll make a motion to reject the bids. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That action carries. Just a clarification, then we'll give Dr. Kiergert a directive to, to Mr. Miley to...
Ms. Vanderbilt and I can work with Dr. Kiergert with Unbuilding Facilities Committee, and we'll work with Mrs. Harrington on the, uh...
Perfect.
This summer, and we'll come up with a, I'd like to get us, I'd like to get a meeting with Dr. Kiergert, Mrs. Harrington, Liz and I, and then maybe we can get Mr. Regal and Mr. Miley and Mr. Dokabaka, and we can all get together and formulate a plan. So, maybe by the fall, late fall, you know, early, right away, next, after the first of the year, maybe we can come back and get going on this, and...
As I say, if March is the deadline, I mean...
I don't see any reason why we can't go out for bids, or at least work to get the, the stuff ready and out for bids by the first of February.
Yeah, I think I want that.
I'd say, March is the deadline, not February.
Right, and that's, and that's, that would be my hope, that we can get that.
You go too, you go too early, and then you, if you go, we're too late.
Right.
Yep.
'Cause we have a lot of, we have a lot of positive things coming. And this is, this is, we have to take a little step back. I know it's a chunk of money, but we have to take a step back and look, this is an investment, you know, in the infrastructure of this district that is gonna help over the timeframe, is gonna help hundreds and thousands of kids.
And not only is reinforcing them, why we reject them and come up with an A plan versus piecemeal, or whatever term they look at.
Let's, let's do it right the first time.
So, that's what we're gonna do.
Very good, good discussion. Action item G six, approve the 2013, 2014 original budget, Ms. Harrington.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna try to talk at a normal speed, but it's a lot of information, and once I get going, just slow me down if you need me to. Oops, I just turned that on. Okay. So this is the presentation of the 2013-14 original budget, so the budget for next year would begin July first and run through June thirtieth. So, the biggest pieces that impact this budget is what happened with 2013 legislation. Some people even called it the education session. We have Representative Swatsky in our audience today, so just wanna extend a thank you for everything that was done related to education. It's one of the best education sessions we've had in years. So the first thing I'm gonna do is go through the impact of legislation on fiscal year fourteen. I'm gonna give you a preview, because the majority of the items you've heard talked about in the legislation actually impact fiscal year fifteen. So I'm gonna give you a preview of that, and then there's even a little bit that touches fiscal year sixteen. So, the 2013 legislation impacting fiscal year fourteen. The basic formula was increased seventy-eight dollars, or one point five percent, so that's up to five thousand, three hundred and two dollars. Compensatory revenue was also increased. The staff development, two percent set aside was reinstated. So, we can just talk about that for a minute. It used to always be of the general fund, the basic formula, two percent of it had to be set aside for staff development. And then a few years back, they suspended the two percent set aside. And so what we did as a district, because we have a strong belief in staff development, we still continued to set aside anywhere from point five percent all the way to, to one percent. So we were still sending aside money. And also at that time, there was requirements that the money set aside was spent twenty-five percent district-wide, twenty-five percent to exemplary, which is like best practices grants, and then fifty percent went out to the sites, and it went out based on the number of staff in the buildings. So at this point now, the two percent set aside that was suspended, that's back. But what is not back is how we have to break it apart. So they've taken away the, the twenty-five, twenty-five, fifty, and now we can break it apart any way we want to. Well, if you think about having to set aside two percent, and now, and then not having to set it aside for years, we use... Well, if you think about having to set aside 2 percent, and now, and then not having to set it aside for years, we used that money for various things in those years. Now we have to set it aside again. So what's going to, the way that we have split it up is 75 percent of the 2 percent is going to be, um, district-wide, and then 25 percent will go out to the sites. That's still going to be more money than the sites have gotten for staff development in the last few years, so they're definitely going to see an increase there.
The 2 percent's on the 45 million?
The 2 percent is on the general education, it's on about 29 million, it comes out to about $500,000.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, and so what's going to happen with the 75 percent is district-wide, that's still going to fund, um, quite a bit at the buildings. In fact, one of the things that we can fund, and Dr. Kiergert mentioned it, is teacher evaluations. Now, legislation did not specify what exactly in teacher evaluations can be, um, can, it can be spent on, but in talking with MDE, anything that's touching those evaluations where it's kind of staff development for the teachers. So when you're talking instructional coaches, you're talking the actual, some of the actual evaluators could even potentially have a portion funded. It's just key that anything staff development, it does have to deal with, uh, staff development. You can't just hire a teacher for the classroom, that's not going to work. And we do have to have a staff development plan, so one of the things, when the money kind of went away, of course, your advisory committees kind of go by the wayside. So we'll have the district-wide staff development team, they have to write up a district-wide plan, so that all staff development spending on this has to relate back to that plan. And Cheryl Nash will be, will be leading that up on, from a district-wide level, and then the buildings will also have their staff development teams, and a lot of them used their building leadership teams for that, so that's something that you'll be seeing. Also, career and technical education aid, career and technical education was funded by levy, and now there's a bit that's going to be funded by aid for us this year, it's going to be about $27,000. And then integration revenue, we've been talking over the last year what's going to happen with integration revenue, it's back, it's going to be called achievement and integration revenue. In fiscal year 14, we're not going to see a lot of changes in it, but in fiscal year 15, there, there are changes that are going to come through. We'll be getting more information on that as that comes from MDE. But for fiscal year 14, we're very grateful, that revenue is back, and, um, quite a few uses for it. Special education has some big changes happening. In fiscal year 16, they're redoing the special education formula, and there, there's many changes in special ed, it's just a complicated, um, animal. And so a lot of times our special ed revenue is our soft numbers. Well, we're going to have two years of transition before we get to fiscal year 16, so we have fiscal year 14 and 15. Some of the things that are coming out of that is we have a cross subsidy reduction aid, so that's where, at this point, only 68 percent of teacher salaries are covered, and then we have a statewide adjustment factor, and that's 85 percent of the 68 percent, and so the rest is covered with general funds. There's going to be a cross subsidy reduction aid, from what I'm seeing right now, and again, these numbers are pretty soft, it could be up to about $80,000, but we're just, we're waiting, and we're going to see what MDE comes out with. And then there's going to be a change to excess cost aid, and so we should get firmer excess cost aid numbers sooner. It used to be, it'd be two years past closing the books for that year, and we'd still be finding out what our excess cost aid was, so it was an estimate for a very long time. This should, should take care of that, and it should make budgeting easier. Uh, and then we have the state school lunch, the reimbursement was 12 cents a meal for lunch, and now it's going up to 12.5 cents. So those are our big impacts to fiscal year 14.
See Pam, if you said it, I'm sorry, I missed it, but when was, uh, how long have we been operating on the lowers, I can't remember how many years it's been, though, we've been operating on with that lower staff development setback, the lower number.
It's been about two to four years, it was different years that that got implemented.
Okay.
It's been two solid years, and then, and then we also had one year where we could have an agreement with the teachers, and they could forego some of their staff development money, so there was a year that we did that and actually used that for negotiations, you might remember that a while ago.
Last time that was actually set, what that, what that was set at two.
It was at least a couple of bienniums.
It was above, it was at least four years ago.
Okay, I think it's.
Yeah, it's been quite a while.
At least.
Yeah, I think it could be longer.
Maybe about three.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I have a, just a couple of questions on those comments. You said that the state's allowing us to use the evaluation money, or the.
Staff development.
Staff development money for evaluations.
Yes.
First question is, so what, out of that $500,000 roughly, what value is the district thinking of using for evaluations? And my concern about that is, we knew these evaluations were coming prior to this flexibility, and I want, I want to be assured that we will have the staff development dollars to do what needs to be done, regardless of that evaluation expense. Does that make sense?
Well, I think, I think the staff development dollars are going to go for staff development, and I think what it does, it just gives us a little bit more flexibility. If we have to hire somebody else to help, because right now everybody's going to have two building, two principals in each building, or three, who can do evaluation.
Yeah.
We've increased the number of people that are available, and, uh, you know, my hope is we don't, don't have to use any of it, but if there's a situation where we get to, um, where we have to hire an additional person to assist with, with evaluations, I don't think that'll happen, but I don't know.
I just want us to be aware of, the goal of where we're at with staff is that we should have to do that.
Well, that's my hope.
Um, and I just wanted us to be aware that if that's coming out, or we're spending a significant amount of this staff development dollars on the evaluation purpose, I have concerns that we're not neglecting the staff development.
It's not the setup of teacher evaluations that the money is, would be spent on.
Okay.
It would be more on the results. So for instance, you have learning walks, people are going on learning walks, and they're going from room to room and they're evaluating, or they have all these mini observations, and what's coming out of those is, okay, you have this teacher who needs to work on this, this, and this. Because as you know, especially with SIG, you know, everything's going to be based on the standards, basically what we've worked on so much is that instruction and how instruction is delivered, tying that into staff development. So realistically, most of the staff development that's occurring should be coming out of those teacher evaluations. That's how we find out what our need is for that staff development. And so what you'll see is that it all kind of ties together, but yes, it's not going to be, okay, what, what program do we need to use, and what staff development, or what teacher evaluation model are we going to use, and let's spend money on that. It's not going to be that kind of thing. It's going to be, okay, we've done these evaluations, now we see we need staff development here, here, and here. Well, let's use our district-wide money to go ahead and do some of that. And in addition, if we have the instructional coaches, which provide the, that type of development to those teachers, we're talking about using staff development money on that, which would be, those times they're spending with teachers is considered staff development, and Cheryl, if there's anything that I'm not saying right, or you want to add to that?
I think you're, I think you're doing a good job, and I think, yeah, just utilizing the instructional coaches, like next year at the middle school, there'll be an instructional coach, and using that staff development money, the district funding, to support that person makes perfect sense, and the middle school will definitely be ready to take that on.
Okay.
Set.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so that's the legislation that impacted 14. Before we get into the 14 budget, I'm going to talk to you about 15, because those were some exciting changes. You need to remember, the things that I'm talking to you about right now will impact fiscal year 15, and you will get a lot more information on this when I come back and present those budgets in, over the next few months. But, the formula allowance will increase 80 dollars, that's 1.5 percent. The pupil waitings will be simplified. Now, they're going to be simplified, but it's going to make it more complicated for about a year or two, because I'm going to be here explaining to you how this is so much simpler, looking at these numbers this way, but the legislators didn't want us to lose any money. So they didn't want to say, okay, we're going to simplify this, and you're going to lose money by sticking with all the same numbers. So you'll see a bigger jump to the basic formula than 80 dollars, but, and you'll also see jumps to other formulas, so that we have the same money. So for instance, gifted and talented. One of the things that came out is, they have these pupil unit waitings, and the gifted and talented formula is going to go up $2. So people are like, ooh, more gifted and talented money. No, because we're changing the pupil waitings, and those will look lower, they had to up the gifted and talented money, so that when we multiply those two, we end up with close to the same dollar amount. So there were many legislative changes that related to making it so that districts remained whole, to what we already had, while simplifying it, so that when I come here and explain it, and the audience, everyone will be like, oh, yeah, that makes so much more sense than taking our average daily membership times 1.16, and times 1.3, and 1. this, depending on what grade you're in, so it should make it simpler. But some of those increases relate to that. Now, safe schools, we actually have dual increase on there, there's a $6 increase next year. $4 of it is actually going to be new money for safe schools funding. $2 of it relates to making us whole for the pupil unit waiting changes. So that's one of the things that's going to happen.
Pam, on the pupil weight change, maybe it's too early to ask this question, though, but I'm assuming because it's a voluntary program, it's a voluntary contribution, I mean, from the standpoint, if you don't want to have all-day, everyday kindergarten in schools that don't want them, I'm assuming they're not changing the weighting to, to 1.0 for kindergarten kids?
Um, the weighting for kindergarten kids will go to 1.0 for all-day kindergarten. It was at point, I want to say 625, it'll go down to 0.55 if you have less than the full time. So you'll get 0.55 for like, so you want to stay with a halftime program.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go up in 50, we'll go.
So we'll go up to 1.0.
Perfect.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, then there's a uniform general education levy returns. Um, pre-Jesse Ventura days, you guys had something called Uniform General Education Levy, and then that went away, and the state said, we're going to fund a lot of this with, with aid. So that's going to return, but it's going to be called the Student Achievement Levy. Now, I'm not sure how this is all going to play out until, um, MDE runs our levy numbers, and we, we actually start to see that in the fall, but you'll have the Student Achievement Levy, but they didn't really want to impact taxpayers, so there is going to be some change to the operating capital levy. So that taxpayers are, they're not going to see like, oh my gosh, they, they put this in, and, and my levy's going to change. They should see their levies staying fairly the same, they shouldn't see a big increase, but they're going to change the operating capital to kind of offset that, which what I'm hoping for means that we'll see, like right now, operating capital's aid and levy. So if they're going to reduce the operating capital levy to replace it with this other one, hoping that they're going to increase, that the aid piece will naturally increase. There is a formula for that, but I'm not going to tell you with 100 percent certainty what it's going to look like until I see those numbers actually run, so I just want to let you know that, that that's going to.
They're going to increase levy money without affecting property taxes.
Right. It's okay. Um, and now.
There will be a test after this.
Keep your eye on, on the levy.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, another one that, I think this is kind of great, um, school boards will have the ability to convert, thank you, $300 of voter-approved operating levy to be board-approved. So, and you're going to hear more about this as we get closer to September, because that's when you'll have to make a decision on if you're going to do this or not, is, is by September 2013. So what that is, is we have a $700 levy right now, and it's all voter-approved. What we will be able to do, and it could be a little different, because they're going to put in the new pupil waitings with it, so we'll let you know, but it's going to be up to $300, we can say, okay, that part's going to be board-approved. And what I'm hearing right now is that's good for five years, so we can say, okay, we're going to turn it $300 board-approved, and then in five years, we could say, okay, we're going to renew this $300 board-approved. So what it does is, for, for some districts that don't have a levy, what we're hearing right now is they can have a $300 levy, they haven't been able to pass one, whatever. Gives districts like us the ability to have that part be voter-approved, so that becomes kind of a stable funding source, we're not dependent on necessarily election, um, at least not voter-approved election, and it gives a little bit more local control to your school boards. So that's out there, and we'll, yes.
So if you have an existing levy up to, say you have two, 400 and 300, and the 300, just so I'm clear, the 300 one is set to expire, we can board approve the 300 levy, because that's the one that's being, or is it total, we will be able to do it?
We have 700, we, as, Wilmer Public Schools has $700.
Yeah.
We know we have like 498 and 201.
Yeah.
We would look at that, and we would say, okay, we're going to take $300 of the 498 one, and that's going to become our board-approved levy. And so, now this is how I understand it today, and as more information comes out, it could change, but then whatever was remaining would still expire, like, you know, eight years on the road, nine years, whatever it is. Or we could take that $201 one and say, okay, we're going to take $201 from this one, we're going to take $99 from this one, so we're just, we're waiting for more information on that from MDE and how that'll play out, and that'll come to you, and you know, some boards will choose not to do it, some boards will say, nope, just leave it voter-approved. So we're just, we're just going to wait and see, and, and we can talk about it, um, we can talk about it as a school board, and so we'll probably, hopefully have more information in, in August, maybe we'll have it as a discussion item, so we'll see how that goes.
Is that what we have, Pam, for, is that what we have sitting out there right now?
$700.
$700?
Yep.
Two different, two different.
Yep, two different expirations, and that's operating, that has nothing to do with bond referendum. All right, I already talked about the safe schools levy increase, I've talked to you about the special ed that will be the transition year two, there'll be a tuition billing change. So, we have non-resident students coming into our district, and oftentimes we get the general ed money for them in their tuition bill, and we'll get 100 percent, let's say they're here for the year, we'll get 100 percent. It's changing so that we'll get 90 percent of the general ed money, 10 percent will stay with the resident district. Right. So, it, it's, the way it's being explained right now by MDE is, so if you have a lot of kids going out of your district, like more kids going out than you have coming in, and you still get to keep your 10 percent, and the other districts are only taking 90 percent, well, that's kind of nice for you. But if you have more kids coming in, and you're only getting 90 percent, that's not as good for you, so that's a change that's going to come out. Again, more information to come, I'll be able to give you more information on the rationale, because I am sorry, but I don't know the rationale, or like what they think the benefit is of doing it this way, um.
So that, will that part affect us on the other side, that we send those kids to the program that's going to be at the West Campus?
Um, it'll.
Or is that going to be?
It'll impact us both ways. When we take non-residents in, and when we send, um, our resident kids out, it impacts us both ways, and sometimes we don't make a choice to send them out, there's times we make a choice to send them out, so we may choose to send them to Minnewaska. But there are times when our kids open and roll out, so this would impact, let's say, an open and rolled student who's also special education, when they go out, that'll impact that as well. So, we'll see, and as we get more numbers, then, then we'll know. So Prairie Lakes, I'm going to talk to you about in a couple minutes, because that's going to be a little bit different. All right, so that's fiscal year 15, big news, all-day, everyday kindergarten, we're, I don't even have that on there, do I?
Maybe for those that are watching.
Oh my gosh.
Clarify what, when you say fiscal year's 15, for the people that are watching, what that means.
14, 15 school year. This budget that we're going to talk about is 13, 14 school year, and how, I don't have all-day, everyday kindergarten on this, I don't know. All-day, everyday kindergarten is the biggest deal of fiscal year 15, so it's not on the PowerPoint, but when you go to the website and, and read the budget, um, it's out there. That, that's the biggest deal. It's really, really exciting that our state is deciding to fund all-day kindergarten, it's something this district has done for a long time. We'll get to see the impact of that, because we've been funding it, so we've been taking money from other, other places, basically, to fund it, so we might have used that money for different things, and now we'll have that additional money coming to us. And so lots of people have lots of ideas on what we should do with that money, probably about five times more ideas than, than we have money, so we're just gonna, we're gonna calmly spend that money. And Jerry has ideas, too, so, um, the 2013 legislation impacting fiscal year 16, I mentioned to you, special ed funding, formula change. So now let's start getting into how all of this impacts our 13, 14 budget, which starts July 1st. They're going to change the pupil unit waitings, but not for another year, so we're still on the old system. So our average daily membership in the revised budget this year was 4,123, we're estimating 4,198 students. Not taking into consideration the increase of the basic formula or anything, that is going to cause us to have increased revenue of $479,000. So that's for those students, and again, that's usually the graduating class going out, and the incoming kindergarteners. This year was just a great year enrollment-wise, our enrollment went up, our enrollment held, it, it was just fantastic all year, we had people coming in, um, whoops, all year long. This is the picture version of when enrollment's done since 2005, and you can see, it was up in 2006, and then it declined in seven and eight, we had a little jump in 2009, and then it's declined in 10 and 11, and then 12 started going up, 13, those numbers are almost solid. We'll be closing that out in the next few weeks, and then we see 14 going up even more. Does this mean that we have an increase in enrollment? I, we'll see, we do for a couple of years.
Do we have, uh, any numbers for?
Do we have any numbers for '15? We talk about preschool, early childhood, those things, about making that connection between the district and them. We're doing planning for two, three years out, four years out, knowing what those numbers are at. It's all guesstimate, but they are today. We should be trying to figure out what those numbers are. Whether that is a steady trend or, "Oh, we had three good years and now we're taking again."
The best way for us to try to see that is by watching the graduating classes and incoming kindergarten classes. That's the best way when you're talking about out into the future. Those are the things that you're looking at. And so there's...
I'm talking about the four-year-olds. I'm talking about the four and five-year-olds.
Right. That's what you're looking at. Those are, as you look out the '15, the '16, the '17, those are your incoming kindergarteners every single year. So you're looking at your three-year-olds and your four-year-olds because they're going to be those kids in the future.
We don't have those numbers.
Are we doing that? No, we do do that. We look at that.
You should see that.
Well, you're seeing, you're seeing the increase because we've been pulling in kindergarten classes. When I first came here, we were pulling in classes of 305, pulling in classes of 336, 340. So you're seeing that, and you're seeing, you're seeing graduating classes of, let's say, 28 and 9. Well, that's a big difference.
We get them in preschool. We need to pick them up in preschool screening.
Right.
Yeah.
But the push, the push is to get that preschool screening earlier.
Exactly.
So if we can get that push to get preschool screening, and Steve's raising his finger over there, then we should have those numbers, not only for the incoming kindergarteners, but the ones that are coming in in '14, not '13.
Yes, and like you...
Our department, each year, it does a population of the 0 to 4 population. So we've got the estimated numbers. They're much more solid for the three and four-year-olds than they are for the 0, 1, and 2s, which they haven't had a lot of contacts with.
Yep, which we're excited.
And every year, you've got fairly solid numbers. And then the best point is, the easiest thing is the incoming kindergarten increases where we really get the solid numbers, but we do have fairly solid numbers for the four-year-olds.
Yeah, I think it'd need to, at least information only, see those numbers.
Yep, and I can certainly...
And we know they could change, but...
Yeah, I can report them to you in the board report and tell you what Steve's, what Steve's group has. Keep in mind, you know, obviously those numbers change all the time.
Sure, as well as these...
Yep. Another interesting thing that we've had that we're watching right now, the Midwest Technology Campus, and I think it was the Life Sciences, actually, our newspaper person would probably be able to better describe this. For purposes, it's been called the Burmese people, but they're actually the Karin. Okay, I want to make sure I'm saying that correctly. And a couple of weeks ago, there was a presentation over there, because we have, there's about, I think, 50 of those workers over there, but it's mostly just the men have come and the families have stayed in St. Paul. And so that presentation, the school district, actually, a couple of our school district employees went there. I believe Becky was also there. She's in our audience tonight, or was? There she is. And went and did a presentation and actually walked them through some of the myths and some of what's real. And here, here's how you register, and here's pictures of our buildings, and here's more about the process to try to make these people more comfortable. And today, we had our first family come and register. And I believe they're bringing three students and a preschool student. So we're pretty excited about that. One of the things that this group of people thought was that when you started in a school, you had to stay there or your credits wouldn't transfer. And so that was one of the things we could clear up. And so there's a big push to bring those families to the community because it's good for the workers, it's good for the families. So that's something else that we're watching right now, because that could be quite a few students. So that is another thing that could impact, you know.
Just a side note, did we institute or initiate that conversation, or is that something Midwest Technology Campus called and said, "Hey, we need this, we need to do this?"
Life Sciences came to us, as far as I understand, and said, "We're going to have this meeting." And we said, "Great," we're there.
Okay. I think it's wonderful that we're, cooperation working that way.
Absolutely.
That they're concerned, that they're concerned about their employees and their families as well as we are concerned about, obviously, the students.
Yep.
A couple of years ago, they talked about coming here, the Karin. The problem is, there wasn't enough housing available. There's still a problem with available housing in town. So they've, they've got to balance all that out.
And there's a very established community in St. Paul, and from what I understand, in Morelandton as well. And so it's going to be very important for us to establish a community here in Wilmer. So...
Pam, was there the enrollment dip at the end of the year?
Yes.
You don't, was that less this year than in other years a little, or...
It didn't seem to come as early as it has in past years. Some of that dip is just, is timing with when the ALC ends, but it didn't seem to come as early. And we had people registering going into the last two weeks of school. We still had people coming and registering. So this is very unique. But our numbers had great...
Was one of those less of a dip this year?
I think, I think there was less.
Yeah.
Or, and if you know why.
And I'll be able to give you some of those numbers a little bit as we finalize those ADM numbers, because we've been about 3% from the beginning of the school year to the end. We, not only, we started our numbers much higher than we thought.
Yeah. Well, the change in the grad test will help, too, because we had a lot of people, we had a lot of kids who left and went to North Dakota and graduated up there because they couldn't. It was virtually impossible for them to pass the grad test, so.
So less could be passed.
Um, yeah, that'd be right. Maybe me, especially the math.
Okay, so general fund revenues are going up $1.4 million. Now, this is the Prairie Lakes conversation. Okay, so local revenue are set to go up about $122,000. Prairie Lakes Schools is being changed from being classified as an ALC to a care and treatment. And the ALC, basically what would happen is, we would get the general fund money for these kids. And if they were non-residents and were special ed, we would tuition bill. Well, when you're classified as a care and treatment, that general fund or the basic formula revenue doesn't just flow to us anymore. It flows to their resident district, and then we will need to tuition bill. So it, it looks like we might end up with a little bit less money because it'll be based more on actual costs, and it will be on getting the general ed money. But I think we need to wait and see how this is going to play out. We're just going to have to watch. If anything, I think we're going to come very, very close. So that's, that's a change. And it's a pretty big change. It changes the categories, so...
So our Prairie Lakes School, what you're saying is operating very efficiently.
Yeah.
Because we received more money than what it was costing for those.
That, yeah. That's what it appears. And so we'll see a little change there. And of our, of the 61 ADM that we have at Prairie Lakes, and that would be like, not really students, but ADM, only eight are resident students. So while the rest are non-residents. That's right. So part of what I'm doing is I'm also, because this is big. I mean, we have run Lakeview like that, but Lakeview has small ADM numbers. I mean, we're talking maybe 13, depending on the year. And that's gone down over time, but, and so this is going to be big, and this is big dollars, too. So I checked with MDE and said, "Who, who else has the situation in the state and who's doing a great job with it?" And I talked to somebody from St. Paul, and I'm trying to get a hold of someone from Duluth. And basically what I've found is, what we're doing, it's the way to do it. So we're on the right track. So we'll see how this plays out next year. They still, for the, for fiscal year 13, which is what just ended, there's still an ALC. So we'll have that funding come through the same way.
Are they, so you're going to be billing versus just receiving the funds?
Yep.
To those dis, then I would assume we will have a cost factor for that going to those districts as well? For that record, keeping billing those purposes, we'll have a cost, a charge to them?
Yeah, they'll be charged. The tuition billing is charging those districts.
But I mean, there'll be a charge for that paperwork that we did not have to do before that we have to do now?
Well, it depends. If we go ahead and code part of those salaries to Prairie Lakes, that'll get picked up in the charge.
I mean...
So yes, that makes good sense.
It seems like we should try to recoup as much as we can from those other districts instead of us losing the money.
You got it. So that's what's going on with that. And that number is partially, you see it's only $122,000. That's partially offset by having lower health than safety levy for this year. All right, so general fund revenues, I mentioned, and this is where you're seeing the legislative impact. The formula allows increase $78 per pupil unit. Also, we had the enrollment increase, and that has a positive impact on state aid. We've got the career and technical education aid, the shifting of special ed funding, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that in just a second. But partially offsetting Prairie Lakes Schools, that general ed money coming to us, but now it's going to come in that local revenue line. That's just where that tuition billing flows through. So I want to talk to you for a second about special ed funding, because I want you to be aware of a movement that's happening in the state right now. As you, as I've talked about before, one piece of special ed funding, we take our salaries. And we get rate, we get funded at 68%. But if we were to do that, if we were to get funded at the full 68%, that's more than was allocated, the state has allocated for special ed. So what happens is there's this statewide adjustment factor. So right now, it's at about 85%, 88%. So we get 88% of the 68%. Okay? We've talked about that before. Well, the movement that's happening in the state now is, they're saying, "Well, MDE has come out and that, they've said, 'Take all your special ed salaries, as much as you can, and put them to state because that'll get reimbursed.'" Where in the past, we've taken a chunk of that and we've kept it being funded out of federal. So federal funding is one for one. Federal funding, they'll fund the salaries, one for one. They'll fund the benefits, one for one, but you only have so much of it. Well, now MDE is saying, "Well, take that and move it, move that salary over, and then take some of your benefits," because that's where cross subsidy comes in, because we're not funded for benefits from special ed. Move that over to federal, and you're reducing your cross subsidy. Well, that, that's great. And it's something that I did when we were in Pine River. We did that. And there's one district doing it. It's fantastic. But now they're telling all districts to do it. So when all districts do that, and so that expense for salaries gets bigger. What's going to happen to that statewide adjustment factor? So right now, where we're getting 88% of 68% is not going to tank it. And I'm worried about that, and nobody's really talking about that. So we'll know, and when I come to talk to you in October and November, and the auditors are here, we should have a better feel. Everyone's EDRS data will be in. Maybe not even then, depending on when districts get all their data, because you have to get all your data into the state, so maybe it'll even be after that. But that's something I'm concerned with. So I don't want it to be like some big surprise, like, "Oh, look, our special ed revenue's up," and then it comes out that, "Well, it's lower." My hope is, though, that if it's not going to work out that way, that that cross subsidy aid reduction that's going into place and the excess cost change will offset it, so we'll be fairly even. But I just wanted you to hear it here first, and we'll see how it plays itself out. I know it's confusing, but I wanted you to know. Okay, federal revenue, Cheryl stepped out. But we did, we were awarded the School Improvement Grant again. So we had it this past year, and we were, we got it renewed for an additional $100,000. And that School Improvement Grant, that's what's used over at Kennedy. So it's very exciting, and Cheryl will be telling you more about it, but a lot of people in the district did a lot of hard work, worked with the state, and we have another $100,000. So very excited about that.
And that value is $600,000 this year?
It's about $600,000, that's right. The rural and low-income schools funding, that is, we got about $74,000 last year, and we were told that, yes, you're going to get funded for that again, but we don't know how much you're going to get funded. So we're assuming a similar amount for this year. That number won't be available to us until August. So just want you to know that's in there. We're going to have to wait and see what happens. And then we had something called sequestration. Because if you look at our federal revenue, you say, "Okay, you're getting $100,000 more. Why is it only up $69,000?" The sequestration, so when the federal government didn't finish their work, then immediately some of the programs were, were cut back. And so we have estimates of 5% to 8% for sequestration. And we did get, we've gotten some of our title entitlements, but not all of them yet. And they're complex formulas. They're also based on free and reduced lunch numbers and all of that. So at this point, 5% to 8%, all the numbers aren't in yet. That's where we're sitting with federal money. And then other revenues is down mainly because in '12, '13, we had the sale of Lincoln Building in there. That revenue was in there. It's not in there for '14. And we don't anticipate selling any more buildings right now. So total revenue is going to go up $1.4 million.
Of which, of which the state granted $600,000 of that?
No, no, no. That's a $100,000 increase because we already had $500,000 in the revised budget.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
Okay. You have a question?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, all right. Expenditures, expenditures are set to go up $2.5 million. Yes, we are deficit spending. So, and I'm going to talk about that. Salaries and wages is our biggest piece of that. And many of the reasons why we're deficit spending, you've heard about over the last few months in different reports and coming to you. So salaries and wages increase. We're hired, there's a bunch of staff that were hired. So we have an ELL GT coordinator. And ELL is, it's going through a name change to EL, but for purposes of this presentation, we're going to call it ELL. So we're going to have that coordinator. And we've known as a district not making AMAO, which was kind of the equivalent of AYP. I figure I've thrown out all these letters to you guys. But we need some work in our EL program, and so that's going to be happening. So we hired that coordinator. As well as, we're gifted and talented. We're getting four ELL teachers, one for each of the big buildings. So one for each elementary, one for the middle school, one for the high school. We're going to get a .5 high school teacher, a middle school instructional coach, which Cheryl had mentioned to you earlier, a middle school special education teacher, a middle school dean of students, two elementary teachers, one for each building, two elementary bilingual paraprofessionals, a .5 FIAE teacher, and a .5 music teacher at the elementary. And that has to do with the scheduling and how they work that out. In addition, it's a negotiations year again. So negotiations will be starting up for the 2013 to 2015 contracts. So that would be for the 13, 14 year and the 14, 15 year. So there is a modest increase built in for negotiations.
So we're spending an extra $1.2 million compared to where our revenues are going to be.
Mm-hmm.
I'm kind of throwing you under the bus here a little bit, but what would you, well, Jerry as well, if we didn't get that additional revenue, we would still be spending the $1.2 million deficit spending.
What do you think, Jerry?
Yes.
And we would be eliminating 1.3, the revenue that we're getting. Out of those positions, would that entire thing be gone? You know what I mean? What would, what would we, if we had an option to say, "This is what we're going to do," or "This is what we're going to do," what would the options be?
Well...
I can address that a little bit for you.
I mean, just general.
It's fine. Every year, when, when we're looking at our staffing, we're not just assuming that we're going to move forward status quo from year to year. We're evaluating our programs and our needs. So, "Okay, this grade level doesn't need as many teachers because the class is smaller." So we're going to add that, we're going to shift that teacher here. And same thing with our programs. We do that when we do budget reductions, but we also do that when we're not doing budget reductions. So we're constantly looking at our programming needs. And so that's up to it every single time. So when we were looking at these programs, if we weren't going to have that money, we look at what are our current programs, what are we changing there, and what are we either And what are we either adding? Or what do we think we can do based on fund balance and everything else? That also ties into our strategic plan. It ties into everything instructionally and the priority school and the focus schools. All of this is, is really focused on all of those things and data retreats and whatnot.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know that there's anything that we wouldn't have at least talked about. Some of the, some of the additional classroom teachers at the elementary, we had the funds, so we made the decision early on to add those. You know, it's, it's what we needed.
Right. And I don't disagree with that. Would, as laid out here for ELL and the teachers and the coordinator, instructional coach, obviously, we've seen those benefits at the two elementary schools by having those people.
And our hope is that it will be a big benefit at the middle school, too.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. And then expend, the employee benefits, those, a lot of them are trailing benefits. So as you increase your salary, your FICA, your TRA, your PERA, those all increase. And then also, what's impacted by that is employee benefit choices. As Liz has been presenting to us every month, we've had that changes with our health insurance plans and what we're going to take. And a third of our staff had to change what health insurance plan they took. And so there's all kinds of changes like that are, are in there. So that's employee benefits. Purchase services. Okay. More of a special ed conversation here. And when we see purchase services, a lot of it does have to do with providing instruction. We have a very large contract with the Southwest West Central Cooperative for some of our special ed services. They, they provide us with some school psychologists. We have, I believe, one or two on staff. And the rest are provided by them. Also, they provide occupational therapists, physical therapists, so quite a bit. The way it used to work is our federal funds would flow to the cooperative. They would provide those services. So we wouldn't have the expense really for those services on our books. And we wouldn't have the revenue for that on our books. And then we would have what was left and we would fund our special ed, whatever staff we wanted to through federal funding. Well, what's happening now is it's, the expenditures are all flowing to us, so you're going to see all that on purchase services. And the revenue flows to us as well, that federal money. And then we go ahead and pay them. And we pay them through that, it comes through that purchase services line. And then that also has to do with what I talked about earlier with special ed, about taking those expenditures and putting them into state, like, to salaries. So that's part of what we're doing here. We're taking those also and pulling them out of federal and pulling them to salaries and pushing the benefits over. So that's part of that, what you're seeing. Also, our capital projects, we know that most of our capital projects, our building projects are, are in one of two categories, either purchase services or capital expenditures. And surprisingly enough, the majority of them sit in purchase services. Because when we do repairs, even like the roofing projects, they would be in purchase services versus capital expenditures because it's considered like a remodel. So that's the other part you're seeing there. And then our iPad leases are in there as well. And as you know, for this coming year, we are also going one-to-one with ninth and 10th Supplies and materials are down a little bit. And what that has a lot to do with is the curriculum buy. We still have the same amount of money going towards curriculum buy, but depending on who's buying in that year, it's different. So for this coming year, we've got, the ag department is doing curriculum buy. So a lot of theirs goes under capital expenditures versus supplies and materials because they might be buying certain pieces of equipment. And equipment falls under capital expenditures. So that's why you're seeing, partially why you're seeing some supply money go down. And then also a little bit is that our licensing fees for like technology items, they used to be under supplies and materials, and now we're being told, "Nope, code those as dues and memberships." And that falls under all their expenditures. So you're seeing a little increase there. So that's what's going on there. And then your capital expenditures are down 224,000. Technology continues to be a huge focus in this district. But in fiscal year 13, which was this past 1213 year, we had a huge push on technology. We went one-to-one on those iPads. So we beefed up our network, our wireless network, a lot of our infrastructure in that technology area. And so we're not going to have those same types of expenditures in 1314. So that's where you're seeing that line go down a little bit. And that is offset by the curriculum buy cycle items that are now categorized there. Debt service, you're seeing that go to zero. Back in 1112, we did aid anticipation borrowing for cash flow purposes. That final payment for that was made in fiscal year 13 and we'll have no payment and we don't need to do cash flow borrowing at this point. So that goes to zero. And then I already mentioned to you other expenditures with the shifting of the technology licensing fees. That's the general fund. Are there questions? Any more questions on this before we move on to food service? Okay. So moving on to, oh, sorry, we're not moving on to food service yet. We're going to talk about fund balance for a minute. So fund balance. For policy at this point, we have a minimum fund balance that we don't want to go below, 6 percent. That would be, and this is the unassigned fund balance, that would be, that's basically we can spend it on running our district, 2.8 million. Our fiscal year 12 audit came in at 6 point, almost 6.6 million. That was 15.52 percent. Our fiscal year 13 budget, we're expecting to have fund balance of 6.3 million, which is 14.13 percent. And so based on those estimates, fiscal year 14 ending fund balance would be at 4.9, almost $5 million, or 10.53 percent. We talked about we're spending into fund balance, there you can see that that's happening. And then the picture version of that is right there for you. Come October, November, we'll have solid 2013 numbers, which then, of course, will change our 2014. Okay. On to food services. See an increase in the revenue of $98,000. The local revenue goes down just a little bit, and that's because there were some small grants there. We don't know if we'll get them again this year. State revenue goes up a little bit. We are going for the state lunch reimbursement, and this is the legislation we talked about earlier, it goes from 12 cents to 12.5 cents. Then the fresh fruit and veggies grant. We never know at original budget time if we've gotten it, and we know this year. We got the fresh fruit and veggies grant again, and we got it for Roosevelt and Kennedy. Last year, we only had it for Roosevelt. So then when we started, we had it for Kennedy, then we had it for Kennedy and Roosevelt, then we had it only for Roosevelt, and now we're back to having it for both elementary buildings. And so that's where you're seeing an increase in federal revenues there. And then you'll see an increase in other revenues. There's an increased number of meals served and also people that are buying different à la carte and those types of items and catering.
So you get the increase in revenues in food service and that has the tightest reins of what you can spend on.
Exactly. And we have, our budget is going to be going down a little, our expenditure budget is going to be going down. Now, you'll still be deficit spending because you're going to be bringing in 2.8 million, almost 2.9 million, and the expenditures are at 2.9. So because we got the fresh fruit and veggies award, you're going to see salaries, benefits, supplies and food go up a little bit because we have it for two buildings instead of just one. So you see that. The other big thing where you see the decrease is in purchase services, that's going down. Remember, we had the big kitchen remodels that were going on. We had Roosevelt, we had middle school. This year, we're going to have Kennedy. You can still see a pretty good number in purchase services, but that's going to be a little bit less. It's not going to be quite as expensive this year. And then our capital expenditures go up because we are still buying equipment at the different buildings and sites.
But you anticipate that changing because our kitchens will be in pretty good shape after the 1314 budget, correct?
Well, Annette will come and talk to you more about that as the year goes on. They are going to be in pretty good shape, but they're still, we're, now we're to the point where we're having equipment failure. Our equipment gets used way past its useful life and it gets band-aided together and when that thing's done, it's done. And so we had a dish machine go out that we needed to replace, and there's some other equipment that we're running into. So I think you'll be seeing instead of kitchen remodels, you might see us doing some replacement of our equipment that needs to be replaced. But yeah, I do expect that that, that's going to level off. But we're going to have to watch and see what happens as far as our enrollment coming in because that also impacts our kitchens.
Sure.
Then community education, you're seeing a big decrease in, in local revenue. We have the expiration of the Child Guide Bremer Grant, and that's causing part of the decrease. And the other one is we have a lower levy adjustment for school age care. So when we levy school age care, we estimate how much it's going to be. For many years, we were underestimating, which means in the following year, we would have a levy adjustment. Well, we estimate pretty close now. So you're not seeing a levy adjustment, which means you're seeing lower revenue. And then, yep, so that's that. Expenditures then, it's only changing by about 7,000. Again, you're seeing decreases for the Child Guide Bremer Grant that's ending. Seen increase in purchase services. There's an increased investment in our facilities. So community ad, they use our field, or, you know, use the fields, whatnot, and they are also contributing to that upkeep. So that's what you're seeing in community ad. We also have a couple of other funds. We have debt service, which is, we still have our bond out there from building the high school. Our last bond payment is February of 2015, which is in the 1415 year. We're having our facility study that'll be coming up. We'll be evaluating those needs and if we come up with any type of plan to maybe go out to the voters, that, that's a good time right there because we'll have one coming up. The fiduciary fund houses just a few scholarships. Mostly those scholarships are held by community organizations, but we do have a few district holds. And then we have a proprietary fund, which is called Delta Dental. It's our self-funded dental program. So that is the budget, what's going on. It's out on the web, this is the website, and it should be out there either right now it is already out there, or it'll be out there tomorrow. If you have any questions, you can always email me, call me. That's it.
So just clarification, this is a budget, and we will know more of that deficit spending when the audit comes in, in October.
You have more solid numbers for what happened in 1213.
Correct. Which will impact your deficit spending.
Great. It'll impact for random for fund down.
Fund down was left. Very good. Is there a motion to approve action MG six, the 1314 original budget?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion or questions? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That action carries. Moving on to action MG seven.
It's still me.
Approve health and safety policy number 807. Ms. Harrington.
We already have that policy. This is a policy that we are actually required to approve every single year. Used to have something called Health and Safety Attachment 99 that would have to be approved. Now it's just this Health and Safety Policy. So that's what that is.
Is there a motion to approve action MG seven?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That action carries. Action MG eight, approve the 1314 Health and Safety Budget. Harrington.
Okay. Technically, you've already approved this as part of the 1314 budget that you approved, but the state requires us to have a separate form for it and have a separate action item for it. So that's what this is.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve action MG eight?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That action carries. You had now done, Ms. Harrington. Action MG nine, approve tenure status. Dr. Kierger and Ms. Fisher.
The staff that are there are either in their, at the end of their first year in the district and had tenure someplace else, or they're at the end of the, the third year and have never had tenure anyplace else. We started doing this, I think, three years ago as, as kind of a quality control issue. It's one of the reasons why we lay off all of our, our non-tenure people, but we also then bring them back. And these are the people on staff next year that would have continuing contract status because they either taught here one year and had tenure someplace else, or they three years.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve action MG nine?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That action carries. Action MG ten, approve the 1314 Middle School Student Handbook. Ms. Stevenson.
I believe that you have in front of you the six changes that'll be made for our upcoming handbook. They're pretty straightforward. First one's attendance. Then we have one on the ICU best practice information. We have a, an addition, more clarification as far as our physical education. We needed to add a component in there about injuries and about swimming, and then reinforcing the idea of lockers. Then we updated page five, which was the current school lunch prices. Changed some wording on page six for the student services desk as opposed to coming into the office to sign in. And then finally, just a change of the date on page 18.
Very good.
Any questions?
Is there a motion to approve action MG ten?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Further discussions or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That action carries. Action MG eleven, approve the 1314 Lower High School Student Handbook. Mr. Schmitz or?
Mr. Shendel, one of the two.
I'm here for moral support.
We, over the past two years, this will be the first year now that our handbook will be totally nine through 12 on the iPads. So in two years now, we, total, we would have saved $2,000. So anyway, some minor changes as I, you know, go through this. Page one and two, they're just, you know, the year changes. Page four is a school calendar change. Page eight, call attention, Judy Larson was our, has been our school nurse for, I bet she's close to 20 years, and she is retired, and Shondell Rudolph will be our new school nurse. Page 10 is another year change along with the math, their title changed, Algebra II and Advanced Algebra III. Same thing on page 12, another year change. Page 13, we're putting robotics with Mike Craker and Dave Chambers. We did that this year and we had them write up a, a statement about what the prob, or what the program is all about so that, you know, we can get kids into that program. Page 13, with Nikki as our advisor in the one act play and speech with Kristen as the advisor. Page 14 is our yearbook, the Weyzean, Laugh Olin and Tyler are going to be doing that this year, along with the year change that we have there. Page 16, we, with the prom change, this is something that we even incorporated this year. In the years that I've been here, it's always been nine through 12, and we're kind of scaling that back just to 10 through 12. So didn't really have a whole lot of phone calls on it and stuff like that. We got the word out, so we just think it's, it's a little bit better that way. Page 17 is our lunch increases that Annette, I think, has gone over. Page 18, our special material fees are going to decrease from $8 to $4. And Paul can elaborate on this. Our iPad fees, they can write one check for $54, so that the $50 will go for iPad. The $4 will then go for our special material fees that we'll use. Since we don't have a handbook, we will use that towards youth retreats that we have throughout the year and everything.
When you think about that number, $8, that's the registration fee that families pay. Every school has a registration fee. Ours used to be eight. With that $8, they received the physical handbook. And now that we don't require that anymore because it's all electronic, we were able to cut that fee from, from eight to four.
On page 21, our food and beverages. We haven't had a lot of problems with this, but once in a while, kids bring in containers and, so we put any containers greater than 30 ounces and all outside beverages are subject to confiscation in case they would bring...
How big, how big is that? I was just looking at that. How big is that container that we got from the Health and Wellness Committee? Is that 30? Is that 32 ounces or is that 30?
No, it's 25.
Oh. I couldn't remember. You see 32 just keeps, it's like a common number in some of those containers, but it's, it's fine to be at 30. I mean, I know my kids bring those types of things to school.
Yeah, that's fine. Like a liter of cola. We, with many policies, we just need the option to confiscate when necessary. We had a group of students who started coming in with gallon jugs of things and then, and then serving their friends, and we just need to put a stop to that silliness. That's why that's in the policy.
Page 22, smoking policy. The only thing we added there was other nicotine products. 24, attendance policy to include, as you can see there, what we mainly are looking at is if they're gone for 10 days, we'd like to have some type of a medical excuse or doctor note that, or at least contact our nurse to let us know what's going on in a situation like that.
10 consecutive days?
No, we changed the wording to, we took the consecutive out and we changed the wording to after 10 days total in the year, we may be asking for medical reasons for those absences.
It's just to kind of open up the communications with us to let us know if they're, if they're a student, you know, what's wrong.
See, I remember that, but it seems like using that as an example that if we're gonna require high school students at ten days to provide X for excuse or reason.
Well, the middle school have the same thing.
And is the elementary school the same way? I don't remember seeing that in the elementary one.
Uh, you know, we, um, actually have it in our handbook, but that is our policy too.
Okay, just so there's some, across the board thing on those. If it's not the handbook, then it's not a policy, as far as, I know. So it should be.
Then, um, page twenty-five, that's just, uh, another item. April tenth is the last day for college visits. When they're juniors and seniors, they get a total of two days, and the date just keeps kind of a corresponding date. Page, uh, twenty-five, we don't do detention on Saturdays anymore. We're deleting, we're deleting that. We haven't done that for probably three, four years. The best time to catch the kids is right after school, so we have two hours detention right after school when we're there, and so that's worked out pretty good. Then the last page is the, um, a copy of the new members of the student council for 2013, 2014, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Uh, is there a motion to approve Action MG twelve? Or, uh, G eleven, sorry, G eleven.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion or questions? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that action carries. Action MG twelve, approve thirteen, should be fourteen, ALC Student Handbook. Mr. Thompson, I don't see here.
If there were questions with the, with the document, I was here to answer them. There were very minor changes.
Most of them are just date changes, and, you know, it's, it's just, it's, it continues what they've done in the past, just change dates.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the thirteen fourteen ALC Student Handbook? Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that action carries. Action MG thirteen, approve the thirteen fourteen Elementary Student Handbook. Ms. Dirksen.
So, the changes to the elementary handbook were, uh, about as minor as the ALC changes. So, on page two, um, an update of the school board members. On page three, uh, we had an update of the calendar, and, um, just some open house dates. On page four, we had an update of, uh, crossing guard times to reflect the new school start time. Also on page four, we under, we didn't underline of the school reserves the right to determine if an absence is excusable, and then we also added whether to an unexcused reason, uh, for being absent. Um, and then on page six, uh, we also did a change to the homeroom, um, class placement.
Okay.
Any questions?
Questions, comment? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve that action?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that action carries. Moving on to discussion items. Thank you. Dr. Kiergerd, District Facility Study Process. Where are we?
The steering committee's gonna meet the twenty-fifth of July, and board member on that is Chairman Street. He's gonna be on that. We need to make a decision on whether or not all board members are gonna be at these, because if all board members are there, we have to post an agenda, and it becomes an open meeting. If you only wanna have, um, Mr. Street will be on the overall committee because he's on the steering committee. But you need to decide, it doesn't bother me if you're all there, it just means then that we have to post the agenda, post it as an open meeting.
Don't we have already assigned with you and Dan and?
I'm thinking, I don't.
There's the steering committee, and then there's?
The steering committee is a smaller group, and that's Dion, and Nate, and Pam and I, and David. You were on that the last time.
Right, right.
But there's a subcommittee too.
But you were talking, I thought you were talking about the big meeting.
Yeah, the big one.
Meeting, that's the one we're wondering if we have to post, if others show up.
We will have to.
Are there three members already assigned to that, that we?
I'm gonna have to, well, you should've been notified if you were assigned.
I think me and Nathan and Linda.
Okay, alright. Well, I don't wanna cheat you, but.
Well, the flip side is just posted. Tis posted. And then.
That's kind of what I think. Everybody will know anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
So, if you wanna come, you can come. It's kind of what I was gonna end up with anyway. But January, or July twenty-fifth will be the steering committee meeting. So, that will be the first one, and that, and that group will plan on what's gonna happen in the fall.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the addition that we had was Mr. Carlson asked for the joint powers agreement for community education recreation to be pulled for the, from the consent agenda, so I'm assuming you have some concern.
Yeah, I just, I, I, made me think that this gets renewed every three years, and I think only Mr. Reynolds and I may have been here the last time we renewed this. So, uh, it made sense to me that maybe we have some discussion, because I know in my previous time on the board, there'd be questions that would arise on why this happened, who has this, uh, responsibility? I sat on this committee for a good chunk of my first go around on the board. I believe wholeheartedly in the joint powers group. I think it's, it makes a lot of sense, but as I was looking through this, I did have a couple of questions on a couple of the, uh, of the items that we have on here. First of all, under, uh, section five-three. Just some of the wording, as you get, especially as you get down to the bottom of it, uh, the amount to be paid by city to school districts shall not exceed the amount budgeted by city for its obligations under this agreement. I had a couple of questions for that. What happens in the event that they do?
Change their budget.
The other thing is, why is that only in play for the city? Why wouldn't that also go the other direction? Because it's a joint powers. As I read this, and I might be reading it wrong, that's why I'm asking the question, it seems that, uh, the amount paid by the city is what's separated out, but not the amount paid by the school district.
I'm gonna start out with a basic explanation of how this works, and Steve, isn't that, and I'll finish up with the answer, because some of you may not, not know how it works with the cities, so, um, we have Wilmer Community Ed and Recreation, and the recreation piece is really the piece that's shared, and Steve can elaborate further, um, once I get through this, but, um, so, fifty percent of, of Steve's salary and benefits gets charged to the city. So, we hold Steve's contract, so those expenditures get, um, recorded on our books, and, uh, a hundred percent of Bradley Bonk's salaries in there, and then also just some, uh, some miscellaneous charges, so postage, utilities, um, some travel and, and some supplies. And then we take in revenue, so, um, participation fees, that type of stuff is the revenue side. And so, in this last year, or in fiscal year two thousand twelve, because that's the last full year we have, um, we had revenues totaling a hundred and eight thousand dollars, and expenditures of about a hundred and thirty thousand. So, the cost to the city, or what the city sent us, which was above the revenues that we had, was about thirty thousand. That's how the accounting works on our books, but as far as what expenditures are paid, um, by the district versus by the city, because from what I understand, some things are still paid for by the city, and some revenue is still collected by the city. So Steve can address the rest of the question, but that's the basis of, of how it works, based on what we do.
But, um, just 'cause I wanna piggyback off that. I don't know if you agree with that. Ask the question, then come back, or?
The question I had is, it says that the city's responsible for, to provide adult and youth recreation programs and facilities, athletic programs. Does that include facilities, which it says it does? So does the city reimburse the school district for use of all of our adult recreation activities? And that, here's, here's the reason I say that, because we charge for our youth organizations to use our facilities, correct? I mean, there's a fee schedule. Is there a fee schedule that we receive from the city for the use of those facilities as they say that they're up? And the other, the other question I have is, it says that they're obligated to provide. What is, what are they obligated to provide? I mean, is that obligation flexible? I mean, are they, how are they committed financially?
Board members, I think, um, I'll give you a quick history lesson first, and I'll make it real quick, because you've been here quite a while. Five point three and five point four, I think, address, going back to two thousand, this agreement was first signed in March of two thousand. It was much clearer back then whose responsibility was what. The city was doing mostly recreational work, the school was doing educational services. Those have blended over time as we've had adjustments to staffing levels and needs around the community. So I think if you look at five point three and five point four, Mr. Carlson, to answer your questions, five point three is addressing the city point of view, five point four is addressing the school district. So I think what, what maybe needs to happen is to look at the wording of those, and, and Liz was on the committee as we looked at this, um, but as I look at this now again, again, another oversight, I think, um, language in these two areas should probably be cleaned up a little bit. But I think that the, the basis of what you're talking about is, there's a history for programming that was school-related and what was city-related, and I think fourteen years down the road, we're still pretty true to what was school programming and what was city programming. Is it all the way across the board? No, I wouldn't say that, because there's, there's recreational programming that's happening through the school point of view, and there's probably some educational things that happen on the city side of it, depending on where the activities and, and which one of the leaders of the organization are running those activities. But I think, um, from an agreement standpoint, if I were to say one thing, I would say, well, let's look more closely at five point three and five point four, possibly, and, and maybe there might be some language changes that would come. But I think the reality of it is, there is no co-mingling of dollars when it comes to facilities. The city doesn't pay the school for s, facilities, and the school district doesn't pay the city for facilities. So, when we first started, it was, most of the gyms are a part of the school system, most of the ballfields are part of the, the city. So I think that point of view is, is taking place. Nate, to get to your question on facilities, um, most of the association work that's related to facilities, they, they go into the separate budgets of where they are. So if it's ballfields, um, a, actually, most of that ballfield work is, is split between the two entities, and then if it's gymnasiums, most of the gymnasium work is from the school side of things, so.
Which I, which I agree, but the city is saying, we will provide the facilities, so whether it's their park or not, they've agreed that they're gonna provide that.
Yes.
They're not providing the schools. Does that make sense? For the adult and youth rec, you know what I mean? The city says, we're gonna provide these fields, it's our obligation to take care of them. They're saying that we're gonna provide the facilities for winter activities, but actually, the school district is providing them, and the school district is paying for those costs, but there's no remuneration for those expenses.
And I think that's very true with five point four, from the school perspective to the city. If you read five point four, it's the same thing.
So how, you mean example of that? For rec, youth recreation?
For youth recreation?
Where, where, where we said we will provide the facility to the city. That's right, that's where the, that's where my disconnect is coming from.
Gymnasiums is what the school district would provide. The school district provides, back in the day, most of the ballfields.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
School district or city?
School district.
Except the school says.
Gymnasiums, city, ballfields.
The school says we provide facilities for education, not for recreation.
That's where I think what, what you need to do is to clean the languages up, um, just based on that segregation right there.
But Steve, would it, would it make sense, you know, listening to how you just presented, and that does make a lot of sense, the one sticking point where that doesn't hold true for us, I believe, would be the ice arena. We have to levy dollars to pay for that, and, and I think we shouldn't do, I mean, there's a, there's more, there's an expense to everything to that, but if we're gonna say this is across the board, we, again, this is language stuff, I think we're gonna spell out a little bit more clearer, because we're actually taking dollars, one tax dollar to pay into another tax entity, for the use of that facility. And if there's a justification for it, I think we just, I think it needs to be spelled out clearly in here.
History would be the justification. When we merged in two thousand, the Civic Center was not a part of the merger.
Okay.
It's in the most recent, uh, well, I would guess it's probably been seven or eight years now, that I have led the administration of the Civic Center. Prior to that, it stayed inside of Public Works, so there really wasn't the programming relationships between the Civic Center and Community Ed and Rec, but over the last eight years, that programming has become a part of our organization, whereas it wasn't when we first did the merger. So, again, yes, sign of the times. Something that didn't seem to be, um, that vital in this document, and as, as the, as the agency looked this over, oversight on that, Kevin was part of the discussions and just never got brought up.
No, it's fine, I just wanna touch on the happy part, the, you know, the Civic Center part of the happy. My understanding that what we're paying for is, like, our varsity sports, our high school sports, because there's also a whole hockey association.
Oh, absolutely.
And we're not paying for the ice cream for that.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Just for the high school boys and girls programs. One thing I have a question on, and maybe, and, and maybe I am, uh, just reading this wrong, but everything that kind of spells out, and this isn't a big deal, but it's saying, it's just kind of contradicting each other. Three point one, creation of a joint powers board. Powers agree to, to create a joint powers board to exercise any power provided to such a board in this agreement, and the powers of a joint board is set out by Minnesota statute. And it kind of goes on to explain a little bit about what this is supposed to look like. Um, it says, you know, like, modify bylaws. But then you go down to five point five, and it kind of just says that they'll recommend policies in, related to these programs, and make recommendations, but it, it kind of, you know, it kind of infers in, in, in section three that this board has some teeth.
We don't have any teeth.
Right, but it.
We don't.
No, and that's what I'm, it's, it's, it kind of infers it that, you know, there's an inference here that there's some teeth, that they actually are gonna make some things, but then you go down to five point five, and it says, well, you will recommend policies.
And I think that hurts membership, because if you're just going there to show up and not really be able to make any, make any real decisions, it's hard for people to dedicate their time.
And I don't know what we want, what I, what I want, but what I wanna do, you know, what the correct thing is, are we, are we going to call it a, if, if it's gonna be a joint powers board, they should probably, it should probably have some.
Merit.
Some powers. If it's not, it should just be.
Advisory board.
An advisory board.
Or a joint no powers board.
No powers. Or Austin Powers. And again, I think, I think what we're doing here is a very smart move, because we wanna have, we wanna have the, the community involved in this thing. But I, you know, this is our opportunity, because it comes up only every three years, to do this, you know, to take a closer look and just say, where should we be cleaning some of this up? You know, I, I was thinking, Steve, and you and I, I think, had this conversation a year ago when we first started talking at the city, and I'm not sure where it's at now. I know the city people were talking about the establishment of a park board. How does that play? How does se, section five-seven of, of our joint powers? Because if I read five point seven, we have a responsibility as well, or that comes to us as well.
We're not part of the parks board.
Yeah, but if you read five point seven, shall prepare a five, this, the joint powers board shall prepare a five-year park.
And facility.
And facilities plan, so should that be changed and pulled out of there, since now there is a park group for the city?
I, I don't believe so. Um, the park board was a, a discussion related to the charter commission and the work that they've got, and the original charter had a park board as, as part of the organization. Uh, we are going to hold true to, to convening that group and talking about that, and that park board will be made up of the city appointees to this board, is what that will be. But I think this is still valuable to keep in here, because I think what you need to do is to have both entities on the same page. Uh, I wanna present this information to all members of this group, um, so that the city and the school are well aware of what's taking place. I think as we have the policymakers from each entity, Liz, in the case of the school board, and, and Audrey or, or Tim Johnson, Audrey Nelson or Tim Johnson, representing the city council, they each know what each of you are doing when it comes to capital investments, so that if there's any cooperative ventures on, name something, you know, the soccer field would be a great example of what a cooperative venture was. Uh, the baseball stadium, uh, was a cooperative venture. So, each one of the entities in those cases participated in funding both of those facilities. So I think it makes sense to leave it a part of that. Um, I think the charter commission and the fact that the city council has a park board, I think, um, at this point is secondary to what the work of this group does. I, I think they'll, they'll, they'll meet and convene and, and discuss more of the facility things, and, uh, currently, we've got a park study going on from the, the city point of view. Um, they might have a little more input into that, uh, process, but I think the whole work will come back to the whole joint powers board.
Do you think, um, this just needs to be relooked at? Because one of the, one of the other questions that I, that I have too, and I can't remember numbers, Pam, you can help me, it seems like last year or the year before, I noticed that the school's portion of Community Ed and Rec had continued to go up at a fairly significant rate, and there's all kinds of factors, but the city's portion, as far as expense, has kind of stayed pretty flat. And that, I don't know how, I don't know how the city can stay flat with increase of staff and benefits, not increase, but their pay goes up, benefits go up, how can they stay flat and ours continue? It seems like there's a disconnect there on budget and revenue from our side and the city side. Not saying it's wrong, just saying I think it needs to be looked at, and say, is it still, fourteen years later, is it still current to what it should be?
To answer your first question, should this be looked at? By all means. This, uh, this document was put together by the attorneys for the city and the school. This wasn't something that staff put together. So I think the attorney should take a look at this, and I think we should have input from Jerry and Charlene, and, and we can certainly bring it back to the joint powers board. board, because I think in my case, five point three and five point four were overlooked when we looked at this last month. Related to budgets, if you look at budgets, much of the school portion of that changes based upon what legislation takes place related to the school portion of the budgets. We've had schools join our adult basic education department, so the more schools that have come in, the more the GED, ABE program has gone up. So I, I think your point is, is well taken of what is causing those spikes, but there's justifications for those spikes, and I think you're right, that the city budget has stayed fairly flat related to their expenses, and that's mainly because of some budget adjustments that their leadership has taken.
Right.
Into, and what capital dollars, you know, the spikes in the city budget come to what capital dollars get outlaid into, you know, the Community Ed and Rec and leisure service budget.
The other thing I would like to see in this is kind of the hierarchy of who's responsible to who, or who's, you know, I, I asked you, and you were kind of wavering, I said, who is Mr. Brizendine's boss? I think your, I mean, your answer was kind of.
Charlie and mine.
Charlie, and to me, that's an awkward, that's an awkward situation. Someone has to be someone's, your administrative cabinet's boss. Principals are in charge of the teachers in their building. It seems like we should, there should be a hierarchy of, all right, we have an issue with Mr. Brizendine, who are we talking to? Or we have an issue with Brad, we talk to Steve. You know what I mean? It seems like it should be spelled out, and that, well, who's going to take care of this issue?
Well, Brad, that's pretty well spelled out, I think. Brad Bonk is an employee of the school district, so as the supervisor to Brad Bonk. I do have a flow chart, I'll email Jerry, and he can get this out to you, that was developed over the last year, and I, I think there, there have been some minor issues over the year related to hierarchy and whose responsibilities may be what, and there has been conversations about, to clear that up, do you, do you merge into one entity? I, an example of that might be, because the school's got so many legislated ways of having to deal with this program, that the best route would be, does the city give the school district X amount of dollars, and you take on the task of providing community education and recreation services? Or otherwise, you stay with the, the entity that you've got right now.
Because then you're going to talks about, you know, recreation, again, and I don't mean to keep pounding on this, the theory is that we need to look at this. Article two talks about, the board is going to be advised, assisted in development and maintenance of our parks and recreational facilities. While you're on the board, would you say there's good cooperation? There is good cooperation. Could there be better cooperation between the city, streets, parks, and rec, and your office and the school district? There probably could be better cooperation. Who's ultimately responsible for this article?
And I know this isn't an org chart, it's a flow chart, but according, you know, we look at this, though, it says that Mr. Brizendine reports to the joint powers board. Well, they really have no authority, you know.
No authority.
You know, it's.
So we need, we got to.
I think we got to kind of spell that out just a little bit.
And I think clerical put this together, and I think they missed the obvious line that the superintendent and the city administrator should be directed right at Steve Brizendine's name.
But I mean, that, what I'm going to say, if someone looks at that, they'd say, oh, you report to the joint powers board.
Yeah, absolutely.
They have the teeth.
Yeah, so.
Steve, is there, I'm going.
No, I'm saying, I think just clearing some language up. Is there a timeframe that we have to have this done? Can we take a month to give you guys time to go over this?
Well, it's, it's, it's an agreement that's in place pending any other changes to it.
And I think it would be good to have Jerry and Charlene talk about it as well.
Yeah.
I think, because again, the joint powers board doesn't have any teeth, so we just, I mean, there's some conversation, not a lot of conversation.
Invite your advisory council.
Yeah, I think it would be.
The city council's putting this on their consent agenda next Monday, so pending any of them seeing any of this conversation, they might have the same types of thoughts. Anyway, I think the advisory council comes from the school setting of things, you know. It isn't, it isn't unusual that that's indeed what every community ed advisory council in the state, you know, three hundred and forty-two school districts, I think probably three hundred of them have an advisory council, and that's what they're called, they aren't called boards. But I think the point is well taken, that in many cases, they're making decisions, you know, it's just, the final decision's going to come back to you folks as, as the final policymakers.
Okay.
Can we give?
So is there ever been a case where this board decided one way and the city council decided the other way?
I don't think so, because I don't think we bring the same, the same conversation to the table. It wouldn't be the same decisions being made, I wouldn't think.
But I guess that's where, that's where I'm assuming that we would have to lead, have you kind of lead the charge, you, we need to redo this, and I'm hearing this from the school, and I'm, maybe I'm not hearing anything from the city, how can we make this work, whether it's one organization that you just talked about, whether it's spent a great fourteen years, how can we make it work separately, whatever that may be. We just need to have those conversations. Because I think our times have changed, I think our community has changed.
Well, if it's all right, if it's all right for us to give direction to our superintendent, and if we have additional questions, and that email to you, for you to have a conversation with the city administrator, and then come back to us in, in July, as we.
We'll bring it, we'll bring it back in July.
Yeah. Okay, we need to, we got to do something with this motion, though, because you took it off the table. There's a, there was a, an item on consent agenda, so we have to do something with this.
So you can make a motion.
Off the consent agenda.
Yeah, so it's a separate, it's a separate item right now.
Right.
So you'd have to make a motion to table if that's what you would like to do.
We have to do something with it.
Right.
Can we make, would it be proper to make the motion to direct our superintendent to meet with the city administrator and bring back for us at our July meeting, a agreement, a joint powers agreement for us?
We'll get the other modified agreement.
Motioning to table the joint powers agreement until July board meeting.
That's good. That's fine.
That'll work.
Who's making the motion?
I did.
Is there a second? Mike, any further discussion? So to reiterate, we're tabling the motion to, for the agreement of the joint powers board until July meeting. July meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. I have no public comments related to non-agenda items. Board committee reports. Moving on, acknowledgement of gifts and donations. I'll run through these. Donation of one thousand dollars from the Wilmer Rotary Club for the Child Guide program. Donation of eleven hundred dollars for the Wilmer Lakes, from the Wilmer Lakes Rotary Club for the Child Guide program. Steve, don't leave yet. Donation of fifty dollars to the Child Guide program from Sheila and Arlen Shirven. Donation of one hundred and fifty dollars to the Child Guide program from Judy Foley. I'm going to need to stop there, because those are all related to Child Guide. Obviously, somebody is hitting the pavement to support Child Guides, so whoever that is, or whoever those people are, express thanks, because I know it's a big program, and it's, they're all on their own for finding funding a lot of the time, so extend that thanks to them. Donation of fifteen computers, thirty-eight thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars for the early childhood programs from IBM Rochester. Donation of two hundred and fifty-eight dollars from the Wilmer Takedown Club for admission fees for youth parents wrestling duel. I don't know if it's a parents wrestling, but.
[laughing]
Might be a good fundraiser. Donation of four hundred dollars from Wilmer Bus Service for middle school field trips. Donation of five hundred dollars from the family of Stanley Gatewood to the Wilmer Music Department, and a donation of seven hundred and fifty dollars from Stephen Reynolds Foundation to the middle school read one hundred and eighty books. Those are donations, I'm assuming, so that's some fifty. Any other comments?